Evening, please rise and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Reitzel?
Present.
Alderman Logan?
Present.
Alderman Snow?
Present.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Present.
Alderman Shuneman?
Present.
Alderman Kleckler?
Present.
Alderman Folsom?
Present.
Alderman Sabaka?
Present.
Eight i. Eight present, eight of quorum.
Thank you. First item on the agenda this evening is audience requests. Is there anyone in the audience this evening that would like to rise and speak to the council? If so, step forward and just give us your name. Ma'am, come on down. Step up to the mic, please. Thank you.
My name's Tane Austin, and I wanted to find out if we could get some signs put up on a street where my grandkids live, on West 24th. There's a lot of kids that play on that street, and it's awful the way they speed down this road, and the cops don't come, and you hardly ever see them down the road. And one of these days, there's gonna get, a kid get hit. The other day, I was over there, and thank gosh, I was there because I stopped one of them from running out in the middle of the road. There's probably like 10 kids on that street, and they're playing all the time, and the cars go down that street 40, 45 miles an hour, and it's ridiculous. We wondered, wanted to know if we could get some kind of like slowed-down children or something.
Well, what we do, ma'am, any time there's a request like this, if the city hasn't instituted something, Chief Nelson, sitting over the corner, will have one of her officers, they will do an evaluation of that area and then report back to the Public Works Committee on their findings, and if those things-
We, we actually called the police station and talked to them about it, and they said they were gonna monitor it down there, but we never ever see-
It still has to go through council, go back to the committee to authorize that change, 'cause any time we put up signs, any time we have to do a change in our ordinance that identifies them, otherwise, even if we catch someone, it's literally impossible to take them through the process. So, we will do that for you. Is there any particular section that you're referring to, ma'am, where you seem to think that-
It's just a little, a street, it's not-
Like 12th Avenue to 14th Avenue, or-
It's West 24th, it's actually-
It's up by the low, the senior house-
It's Crown Hill.
Rock Crown Hill, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yep.
All right, and your last name was Austin, ma'am?
Austin.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I didn't know if the other young lady was-
I'm sure you're gonna invite me, but-
Oh, good, step, step forward.
Okay, here I am. I'm having an issue again with burning on the island. A couple weeks ago, I noticed a huge fire over there, smoke drifting across the river right to the health department, to the high school. I did contact or left a message here for the mayor and Rodden. It was a Friday afternoon. Contacted Mr. Snow, and Rod knows about it, so I guess I'm just inquiring about that. I thought that there was to be no more burning on the island.
We take, so you have a phone call?
I'll go ahead. It's been presented to the public property committee, and no action has been taken. It is not illegal for the city to use the island for burning, and we're continuing on to dispose of the waste as we've been doing in the past.
So, you're gonna continue to burn on the island?
I'm only the person that institutes the policy. The aldermen and the council are the ones that make the policy. If the public property committee deems that they're going to do something different, then we'll institute it. At this time, they have not decided to do that. Most of the reason is very cost prohibitive, all the solutions for that, and it is, we're perfectly within our rights to continue to use the island, to burn wood products.
But we can't. The individuals can't, right?
Burn on the island?
Burn anywhere.
No, according to ordinance, they cannot.
Okay, so that smoke that's emitted from there is not dangerous smoke, then to our health, as it was indicated? It is?
I'm basically just gonna answer your question as far as the logistics of burning. I'm not going to get into a policy debate on whether we should or should not have an ordinance regarding burning. That decision has already been made.
Mr. Reitzel?
We, you can, burn on the island is obviously limits, but you can also burn home too if you have a burning gift, burn wood.
Right.
And that's the only thing that's being burned down there, is wood. There used to be, well, it didn't used to be that way, but we changed that now, so I don't think you can burn this wood. No, maybe something like that.
So, the branches that they burned don't have leaves on them, then?
We're not gonna get into particulars of leaves on branches, ma'am. I think we've answered your question. That's out of the city limits. It doesn't fall under the ordinance, which is within the city limits. And the city has and will continue to burn there until such time as Administrator Blackridge says the public property committee comes up with another way to dispose of those things.
If they choose to.
If they choose to, yes.
Oh, I thought you indicated to me that you wouldn't be burning on the island the last time I talked to you about it.
No.
You didn't say that?
No, I said that's out of the city limits, so the ordinance does not apply to that area, just like people that live outside the city limits, just outside of the city limits, that are still burning. The same thing applicable there. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item is community affairs. Ms. Blain, consent agenda, we have only two items on there, bills and minutes. Does anybody want either one of those removed for any reason? If not, the chair intends motion to approve.
To move.
Second.
Mr. Shuneman, seconded by Mr. Logan, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further? Roll call, please.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka?
Yes.
Eight i.
Next item is ordinances for second reading and adoption. We have two that'll be handled individually. If you would, please.
Adoption of ordinance 2017-2330, addition of Article 11.5 to Chapter 16, food truck vendor license.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 2017-2330 for second reading and adoption.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Snow, seconded by Mr. Logan, to approve ordinance 2017-2330, second reading and adoption. Discussion. Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka?
Yes.
Eight i. Adoption of ordinance 2017-2331, amending Section 32-222 to read utility committee.
I move for the adoption of 2017-2331.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Logan, seconded by Mr. Kuhlmeier, for the adoption of ordinance 2017-2331 for second reading and adoption. Discussion. Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
No.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka?
Yes.
Seven i.
City Administrator report?
All right, Your Honor, I was asked to, since the state has finally enacted a budget, to go over some of the effects that we can be expecting to have their state budget to the city. The first noteworthy impact is the one-year 10 percent reduction to the local government distributed fund. Although the state is reducing the shared, the share paid to the municipalities, they are accelerating the August and September payments, which will actually lead to 14 payments instead of 12 in fiscal year 18, which could actually boost our $99.50 per capita prediction by $5 per capita. I'm not gonna cash those checks until we see them arrive in the mail, so we're just not gonna count on those accelerated payments. Excuse me, second is the sales tax collection fee. Beginning in July of 2017, a 2 percent fee will be collected on all locally imposed sales tax collected by the state. Our locally imposed tax, or our one cent, is budgeted for $818,000. If that revenue is realized, we can expect to be charged $16,360 by the state of Illinois for doing what they are already legally bound to do. In other words, they are simply stealing the municipality's local state tax funds in a feeble attempt to fund their out-of-control spending and inability to produce a balanced budget. Sorry if that was a little harsh, but... Finally, the state did absolutely nothing in regards to the current pension crisis. Earlier in the year, there had been talk in Springfield that they may actually be discussing legislation that would give all fire and police pensions in Illinois the same sweet deal that Chicago fire and pensions received last year. However, nothing came of the discussion. It is imperative that the state of Illinois act on the current pension obligations that are unsustainable, and I implore our residents to contact our local state officials and demand that they take action during veto session. On the good side, even though that Springfield continues to fail on so many levels, they did manage to find time to pass House Resolution 30. This important piece of legislation declared October as zombie preparedness month, so it's good to know that something got done in Springfield. Questions?
What is zombie preparedness?
You'd have to ask your state legislators.
Just a statement, this is, as far as I'm concerned, this carrying charge is just taxation of the people through a different means, because it's just telegraphing their ta, increase in taxation through our, our taxes here, so...
I agree with that, Glenn, and there's no, nothing that says they won't raise it to 3, 4, 5 percent in the future. Who says that they're not gonna do something like that?
And I would like to see somebody put a sunset on that provision legislatively in order to prevent that kind of thing from happening.
It's ridiculous.
So, I'll just, as we start to see, and if we do get accelerated checks, I'll let everybody know if it looks like we will get 14 LGDF payments instead of 12, but I don't think that's gonna be much of an impact, but I'm not happy about the $16,000, so...
So, meanwhile, we, we are bound by ordinance and by law to pass a budget in May, and they have the right to come back after we've done that budget. They have that right, or they're just doing it?
Well, actually, they don't have a right at all. They have a constitutional obligation to pass a balanced budget, which they've never done, in, I don't think, in any of our lifetimes, so-
That part I understand.
They've operated completely out of their, their scope of legality as it goes, so I'm not surprised. They're trying to make us say, oh, well, good, you didn't take the 30 or 40 percent of the LGDF that you started to two years ago, you're only gonna take two. So, it's one of those situations where they're trying to make us thankful for, that they're only taking that amount of money.
Good news.
Originally, when the budget was first drafted, the first draft had a 1 percent charge for all of the stuff that they routinely collect now for us, and that was removed and instead bumped 2 percent to all the non-home rule or our 1 percent funding. And that also will, obviously, the people that work very hard to get the 1 percent passed for schools, they'll be feeling the same exact thing.
I thought I'd give you an update on, update on the limestone building, but there is no limestone building, so, no. What I wanted to do is kind of give you a time, timeline of things that are gonna go on, and Terracan has prepared this for you, it's in your packet. It kind of gives you all the things that will be going on in the weeks after the debris removal is, is complete, and, and what they will be doing in the test, and when they believe that will start. So, as they say, they planned, they think that they'll be ready to start the comprehensive assessment the week of September 18th, and things should move quite quickly with that. Our US EPA grant that we received for the limestone building in 2014 expires in October this year. The US EPA has already told us that they will extend that out for another year. We're just, right now, Terracan is completing the paperwork, the request for that extension, so... They realize what the cause of the delay was. It was the state of Illinois, so... That's all I have. Mayor, it's good to see you back at council meeting.
Thank you. Anybody have any additional questions for Rodden?
Yeah, tell us what the figure is now on the li, lack of the limestone building, limestone rubble.
Oh, okay.
I mean, people are picking through it?
Yep, yep.
You know, I almost think we, got took to the cleaners on this so-called asbestos deal. I mean, you know, we had to pay extra, have this thing all tore down and whatever. They can haul the rubble out, dump it over next door, people can pick through it, you can have loads of people down in there stacking bricks or whatever. I don't think this was such a hazardous site after all.
You and I don't get to decide that, unfortunately. What I can tell you is that the reasoning behind that the limestone is safe, the, as you saw when you were watching them do the demolition, they do the demolition with water. And as they're doing the demolition, they also do the air quality tests at the same time. The water, in theory, is supposed to be washing the limestone, and therefore, that rubble, since it's been watered as it's being demolished, is deemed safe. There are certain things that are not deemed safe. Any wood that came out of the building, they have never shown that they can get asbestos out of wood by water, so that is hauled off as hazardous material. There are a few other things, too. Anything that is like the pipe material, which is where most of the asbestos, the asbestos was in the pipe wrap and in the roof. The greatest amount of it was the roof, of course, and those have to be hauled off and demolished. So, it's basically the stone and metal that can be deemed safe after it's, they use water to do the mediation.
So, I mean, basically, we're at the stage now that anybody wants to go down and pick up stuff off from rubble piles again?
Yes, yes. We actually, if you recall, a couple months ago, the mayor had said for people to call in and put their name on a list if they were interested on it. Because the pile came out to the road last week, we went ahead and had everybody contacted on that list, and basically, we're just waiting another week or so, and then we're gonna just put it out. I mean, we're not gonna do anything. If people wanna come down there, what we ask is they come after 5 o'clock at night, or they come on the weekends, to, if they wanna get limestone. A lot of people are just stopping and getting one or two that they wanna put in their flower garden or something as part of the limestone building, but some people are coming with, with trucks and loaders, and, and that's fine, but it needs to be after hours.
And in case there's anybody out there wondering, there was quite a few people on the list that were under some assumption that we never gave to them at all, that we were going to use city equipment to load it into our trucks and haul it wherever they wanted it to go. That's not the way it is. If somebody wants it, they're really happy to come and get it, but they have the responsibility to load it and haul it away.
What are we gonna do with, what's left over?
I don't know how much is gonna be left over. We do have plans, Rod. It can be used on the PA site for riprap along the bank for the part that we're looking to do the mediation on, so if there, I mean, it's, a lot of it is even bigger than the C6 of the riprap that we put on, like, the RB&amp;W district, but it could be used for fill along there when we go to do that bank, if there's any leftover.
And I guess, was this originally part of the-
Yeah.
-whole deal in here? I mean, you know, we didn't get a lot of details on what this was, so I guess, I need to ask if this was something to change, that, you know, if they're not hauling this to some landfill or something?
No, no.
Do we have any money back?
Actually, as part of the, the grant, we had to write a recycling program for it, for the limestone. At the time, and I'll just be real honest with you, nobody, including the demolition crew, knew if it was, how much of it was gonna powder, if it was gonna hold together. It held together much better than anyone expected. They really just didn't expect that much limestone to survive the demolition. That's, it just was a crapshoot as far as knowing how much we were gonna have when we were done. They've seen buildings similar to that, basically, the limestone wool powder, at that age, so it was built well.
This question's for the city attorney. Does the city have any liability if someone does get hurt down there gathering this limestone?
I can't answer whether you have liability.
Yeah, let's say someone gets hurt, falls and trips and breaks a leg, or-
There's nothing that would prevent somebody from trying to make a claim, whether or not they would in fact be successful. I can't answer that, because it would be a fact-specific situation, depending on certain things. City's insured for any event like that, so that if there were claims submitted by the city, they're gonna have to pay the cost, because insurance carrier would cover that expensive thing, that's the best answer I can do.
That answers my question.
I think when we, and I'm not sure if it was you or Attorney Sanders, had a conversation somewhat about this, and it was basically, if someone was on any of the city property for any reason, whether they're picking up a limestone, or just fall in a hole, or whatever, it's, it doesn't change our liability at all.
Right. It's the same as walking down the sidewalk.
Do we have, I mean, when the people contacted you, do they make rules, or anything, what they, you know, what they can take, what they can't take, or-
After 5 o'clock?
Just that?
And on the weekends, yep. And there has been people-
So, then that's a way of the construction-
There have been guys down there with-
Whatever use they want to, or commercial, or anything of that nature?
Yep.
Wants to be cleared, yep.
Yep, I mean, we want, we're hoping people can use it, and a lot of people, like I said, they just want a few stones, just 'cause it's a limestone building, but those are the only rules. There have been people down there with loaders and trucks, hoping they put it to good use.
Any further questions? Anything else for you, Rodden?
No, he said he had a couple questions.
I didn't get a couple.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. RG?
In your packets, there's a letter from Sean Fritz. The annual Mary Avenue block party is coming up, and he's requesting that the street be closed and four barricades for September 9th of 2017.
This is invented, or excuse me, this is a neighborhood thing that's been going on for an elaborate number of years.
Make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Snow, seconded by Mr. Folsom, to approve the request. Mr. Fritz has made in regards to the annual Mary Avenue block party, which will be on September 9th from 11 o'clock AM to 10 o'clock PM, with barricades at Mary and 10th, and Mary and 11th. Any further?
I can honestly say that I've never received a complaint, Rod.
Motion's been on the floor. Any further objections or questions? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka?
Yes.
Eight i. I have nothing else tonight, Your Honor.
Mr. Reese?
I have nothing at this time, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Frankenstein?
Yes, asking for approval of, by the council, to award the Galt Avenue project to civil constructors in the amount of $161,515.15.
I make a motion, a sentence of, did from civil constructors, Freeport, Illinois, 1973, 2.15. No. You have to correct it. There's a corrected-
Yeah, agenda, sent right there. 161,515.15.
I think the previous amount included the alternate bid from civil, and I think that was decided that that's gonna go to Murray Construction underneath the city's sidewalk contract.
Motion's been made by Mr. Reitzel. Was there a second, Mr. Kuhlmeier? Thank you, sir. Motion's been made, seconded for the approval recommendation for the Public Works Committee to award the Galt Avenue Street Project to civil constructors, Freeport, Illinois, in the amount of $161,515.15. Questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka?
Yes.
Eight i.
Thank you. Thank you, Baron. Mr. Cox?
I can answer.
Thank you. Mr. Sanders?
I'm seeking approval for, approval for a bid for a 2017 F-350 extended cab with equipment from Vanelle Industries, Inc., 1385 Franklin Road, Dixon, Illinois, in the amount of $67,644.
Make a motion to approve the bid?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Shuneman, seconded by Mr. Logan, to approve the bid for 2017 F-350 extended cab with equipment from Vanelle Industries in the amount of $67,644. Questions?
I have a question, and I don't necessarily see Vanelle's bid, but I see a bid here from Anderson, Rock River Corp., but doesn't seem to have a balance sheet that explains this.
It's, it's actually, they did it together. Anderson Ford is providing the chassis, Vanelle's is putting the stake body and the auto crane on it.
Is this replacing a current truck you have?
Yes, it is. It's basically identical to the current truck, just newer years.
Any further questions, comment? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka?
Yes.
Eight i.
Thank you. Chief Nelson? Thank you, ma'am. Chief Cook? Mr. Siri? Thank you. Mr. Fadella? Thank you. Mr. Spica?
No, I can't.
Thank you. Diane? Thank you. Tourism? You now have some things, and just gonna introduce a very special guest this evening.
Well, as you know, the tourism office has gotten busier each year that I've been here, and I feel like even before it was quite busy, and summers are the busiest. And I was fortunate enough this year to have two interns, Rhonda Reese and Katie Williams. Katie will be leaving us later this week. She's been invaluable to our office, and we wish her well in college. I'd like to introduce you to Ms. Katie Williams, and she can let you know exactly what she's been doing in the tourism office.
Hi, everyone, I'm Katie Williams. I am going into my senior year at Northern. I'm majoring in economics and minoring in sociology, so this has been a really great internship for me to work on. It's been great meeting all of you. I've been working a lot on helping promote the events on social media. Maybe some of you have gotten emails from me asking about events, or sending out press releases. I've also been helping to upkeep the website, and the project I've been most excited about is the Northwest Illinois Film Office. Maybe some of you have heard about that, but we're trying to make the area more film-friendly. And so, I've been reaching out to community leaders and asking them for just sort of city permits or information about the area that might be helpful for film production in the area, so that's been very exciting, and thank you for letting me work here.
We've, we've been very fortunate to have Katie with us this year. Anytime you can get an intern in, but Katie's kind of set a new level for interns anywhere in our city, and Katie, we're very thankful as a city for all of your diligence you put in, a lot of hours, and this is for zero pay, and this wonderful recognition on the last night. Thank you very much, Katie, for everything.
Thank you.
Invested luck and steel.
And she has been gracious enough to continue to work on the Northwest Illinois And she has been gracious enough to continue to work on the Northwest Illinois Film Office when she goes back to college. And that's worth another clap.
Do you really consider Rhonda Reese an intern?
She considers herself an intern, so she is an intern.
All right.
Because nobody's gonna tell her different.
Be glad to know she actually goes out and makes that living.
Really quick, I wanna let everyone know, Pink Heels is coming up in September. I gave everyone a graphic and a quick flyer. We've been getting an incredible response. You know, we have, it's grown from one community to two communities to four communities, two counties and one region. I've just been overwhelmed this year by the number of events that are going on. Every single community is having something special going on. As I get more information, I'll be providing that. Now, the two that are here in Rock Falls and Sterling, they're free, absolutely free. We have the Pink Heels Party on the Riverfront, that Saturday, September 23rd, at the RB&amp;W District Park from 4:00 to 7:00. You'll find the Pink Heels truck on display, Pink Heels t-shirts for sale, there's gonna be tourism goodies, health and wellness booths for many organizing nonprofits, and every booth will be giving away something. Every booth. So don't miss the All Pink Fireworks display, as we recognize those who are living with cancer, in memory of those we've lost to cancer, and most importantly, to celebrate life. And earlier on that day, Pink Heels is gonna be at CGH at the main clinic parking lot, 101 East Miller Road, 10:45 a.m. to noon. Stop by for special pink cookies, giveaways and t-shirt sales from the CGH Health Foundation, and learn about their women's services from the CGH Women's Imaging Center staff. It is honestly too long of a list for me to go through, and of course, you know, I could go through the entire list, but I'll be providing more information, both on the website, social media, on Channel 5, all the wonderful things that'll be going on September 23rd and Sunday, September 24th, for Pink Heels.
Anybody have any questions for you now?
Thanks for the update.
Thank you, ma'am.
No problem.
Well, we have a new department head with us this evening, and it's my distinct pleasure to introduce to everybody Wayne Schaefer. Wayne is the new fiber operations manager for the city of Rock Falls, where we be working in the broadband field. He's got over 20 years in the industry with recent experience in deploying and operating municipal fiber network and developing plans for regional growth. We're very fortunate to have Wayne with us. Wayne, you wanna step up and say something? Welcome to Rock Falls.
I've been here just over a week now, and I'd like to extend my thanks for the warm welcome. I'm very happy to be part of the team delivering superior broadband services to the Rock Falls community, and I've received excellent direction and support from Ms. Black, Mr. Arden and Mr. Sanderson.
We're very happy he's here.
Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you.
Word reports, Mr. Reitzel?
School started, first started.
Mr. Logan?
Doctor, good night, sir.
Mr. Kuhlmeier?
I have something. First of all, looking over towards the walls up in the seating area, the banisters on both sides of the council chambers, we should've thought of it sooner, but thanks to all who had a hand in its installation, I can tell you one thing, they're very much appreciated if you go up in the seats there, so. I felt deeply humbled, but greatly appreciate, great appreciation for the huge honor from the award at the ball through the being Grand Marshal. Thanks to all of you and all of the others who took part in the celebration. Words cannot express adequately my gratitude. While there were many devoted and thoughtful people involved, it was for the 150th for all of Rock Falls, and now we have an opportunity to start a new page in our history. And for that, I was grateful to have a part. Last item is a personal preference. Happy birthday to my wife and partner tomorrow. I've only got so far two meetings, and that wears heavily upon her birthday, so, thank you.
Mr. Snow?
Just, everybody's aware, we got a lot of road work going on right now, and be patient, because there will be some times where certain roads are gonna be closed, but the end result will be worth it. And again, I'm gonna echo what Dale said, school starts, please be careful with the children on the roads.
Mr. Shuneman?
Nothing from the ward, Your Honor, but one note on the utility meeting. Utility committee's gonna meet on the 28th at 8:15, that's a Monday, at the electric office.
8:15?
Mm-hmm.
Anything else, hon?
No.
Right. I guess I just was thinking a little bit here when we were, I had received a request of some type of signage for drivers, beware or whatever. Possibly we should be putting signs up telling parents not to allow their kids to play in the streets, but I mean, I guess that's a parenting skill or something that someone needs to have, but I mean, if you've got a lot of kids playing in the street, that's not a workplace for them. Possibly that should be taken care of on the line, whether it be...
Mr. Folsom?
Nothing, ma'am, Your Honor.
Letter?
Letter has that.
Oh, thanks.
And that's all.
Under my report tonight, just two real quick items. I asked the disordinance 2017-2332, which is amending Section 18155, standing and parking, prohibited in restricted areas between 8:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m., and Section 18168, resident parking, be put under mine. School is rapidly approaching, in fact, kids are around schools even now. This ordinance addresses a problem which has been longstanding in nature on 8th Avenue, adjacent to the Dillon School property, and out towards our water plant area. It has become a place for pickup, drop-off, kids running around, people parking in people's driveways, blocking garages, cutting through yards and everything else. And in a cooperative effort between the police, the city and the school district, we have, we feel come up with a way to resolve that by eliminating the drop-off and pickups off there on 8th Avenue, which will be enforced, and this ordinance will do that. Schools have worked with us to establish pickup areas there on West 19th, where there's crossing guards and everything else, to help, to help make sure that kids and the school is taking on the responsibility as well. And the reason I put it here was simply that we didn't want a first and second reading, we just wanted to get this passed tonight and waive those so that we can just approve it if that's your choice, so that we can get it into effect as quickly as possible with the starting of school taking place.
I'll make a motion for the adoption of ordinance 2017-2332, Section 18155.
Motion by Mr. Snow, and seconded by Ms. Reitzel, for the adoption of ordinance 2017, excuse me, 2332. Questions?
May I want to ask that the motion also include to waive the normal procedure of first and second reading, proceed directly to adoption? If that's what your intent is?
Yes.
Maker?
Yes.
Second. Any further questions? Roll call.
Alden Reitzel?
Yes.
Alden Logan?
Yes.
Alden Snow?
Yes.
Alden Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alden Shuneman?
Aye.
Alden Cluckler?
Yes.
Alden Folsom?
Yes.
Alden Sabaka?
Yes.
Eight aye?
Thank you.
Just one question on that bill. There will be signs posted then?
We will. Commander Capatelli, I know, has been working with Larry. I don't know if the signs are ready to go, it's just with the county being here this week.
Will they be up Thursday?
Okay.
And the intent is not to...
Thank you.
...run up and down the street, but to pick up over the first day.
Yes.
It's to help educate and just let people know that this is the way it's gonna be, and the schools are gonna be working internally with notes to the parents and stuff about it as well.
Right. I'm gonna put it on the Channel 5 ticker now that the streets, if the weather holds out, will be done tomorrow, and I'll take that slideshow off Channel 5, and then I'll do the ticker of reminding parents, and then, plus, the schools are gonna be sending out information to the parents after school starts, too, so it is just gonna be a few weeks of education, reeducating them on where they're to go and not to go.
All right. Just real quickly, sesquicentennial. What a delightful week. I'm sorry that I missed the first three days of it, but it seemed like a great time to take it easy for a while. But having said that, it was a wonderful committee of people that worked so very hard and diligently in the planning of this. Would we have liked to have done more? Yes, we talked about doing more, but it came down to the bottom line of having enough people to be in place to do the things that we needed to do. I think that we filled the week pretty adequately, the people that attended the various events. I heard some, a few negatives, but the positives far outweighed any of that. And I would like to give a special thank you to Eric and Robin for when I decided to walk off the job for three days. They stepped up and took the things that were planned, ran with it and went off effortlessly, and I figured as much. But we thank everybody that had any part in any way, the schools for the use of their buildings without any cost or considerations, both at the high school and at Merrill School, for all the different groups and stuff, the Optimists Club and others who stepped up and served as guests and greeters at the various locations, and things like that. It was a wonderful experience, but I'll be very honest and glad to say that I'm glad 150th only happens once a year, and although it was not once a lifetime, because the next one's in 2067, if anybody's going to be around for that. And I think one of the highlights also was that it gave the city of Rock Falls an opportunity to recognize someone who has devoted years and years and years, both as a past mayor, as an alderman, serving on committees, just anything and everything. And we were so glad that we could do that for you, Glenn, and to have you serve as the Grand Marshal was just, you know, a topping on the cake for everything else that went on. So, thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for organizing the parade. Thank you to tourism for organizing the Brothers of the Brush or the Beardwood Contest. And thank you to Melinda and her group for putting together a love-light tree parking lot full of crafting shows. To the business owners uptown who jumped on board and helped get the music fest, as it were, up there on the street, which went off without a glitch, there was absolutely no disturbances, there was no problems, it was cleaned up quickly, and we got the roads and stuff back open to the police department, the fire department, all of our city departments that opened their doors for open houses, and we actually had residents come to see us for the first time in many, many years. And for all the work that they've all done over and above their normal daily activities to get barricades to places, to get the city cleaned up, to be there to mow, to get anything and everything that we needed done in order to make our city presentable. So, a great debt of gratitude to everyone that I've mentioned, and if I've forgotten anybody, I'm sorry, but it was a wonderful week, and it's all over with now. We have two items this evening for executive session. The first is for Section 2C11, Threat and Pending Litigation, and the chair would like to request the council in the motion to include Attorney Tim Zollinger, as well as Sewer Wastewater Superintendent Ed Cox into session for that. The second session would be for 2C21, Review of Closed Session Minutes. Chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Snow, seconded by Mr. Shuneman. Go to executive session. Any further questions? Roll call.
Alden Reitzel?
Yes.
Alden Logan?
Yes.
Alden Snow?
Yes.
Alden Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alden Shuneman?
Aye.
Alden Cluckler?
Yes.
Alden Folsom?
Yes.
Alden Sabaka?
Yes.
Eight aye?